Just made a hole through the ground and then water just kept coming up out of it. It was like a little geyser that was not that high, but about this high. What are we gonna do now? The drywalls are overwhelmed.
What scares me is when I saw, you know, we have two water vents to go to dissipate the water. And John was still taking water, one was coming in here.
Oh, no.
And that's when I go, yeah, it's water table's full. Yeah, that's how I started getting scared.
Yeah.
That's what I thought the basement did.
Yeah.
We got a lot of rain up there this year.
Yeah.
I think I ran for even four inches in the space of two days.
Yeah.
Just crazy.
It was not expected and I looked forward.
No, we didn't expect it either because we have, we have a manual D team. We could have closed, but we did not get to it.
Yeah.
I know, I'm a little.
That is ridiculous.
Yeah.
So what would, what would nail the architect really is today to look for a, you know, a back.
All right, we're calling the meetings to order. Thank you, everyone. We, it's only been two and a half weeks since our last board meeting, so there hasn't been a whole lot of time between the two meetings, but I know we'll hear a lot from our student rep on all the gazillions of student activities that have been going on. At tonight's meeting, we will, the main event will be, well, there's now a couple of main events. We will have a budget hearing and we will have a public comment session on the budget, specifically immediately after Dan's budget presentation. So if you have comments to make on the, if anyone has comments or questions on the budget, there will be an opportunity for that in addition to the public comments session at the end of the meeting. We will also hear from some students on our Bronxville Promise kind of inaction, which is something that we're all very much looking forward to. We're gonna vote on some wonderful foundation grants and we have two policies tonight for the board to do a first reading of. One is, well, they're both updates. One is a required update and the other one is one that the board wanted to, wanted to update. So before we get started, I did want to provide an update on the process that we've been talking about all year with the language of diversity and inclusion and belonging and the workshops that we've had. I just want to reiterate some of the things that we've heard to date, an acknowledgement of relevant language in the Bronxville Promise, desire to be more visible and accessible with that language, the importance of actions as well as words, a desire for more advocacy for students and tools for families. And also, we heard interest in the difference between policy and mission statement. And the good news is we've, we've also heard a lot of common ground. I wanted to report on what's happening so far in response to what we've heard. In the advocacy and tools department, administrators are following up on each of the, on each of the issues that were raised by individuals who participated in the workshops. We're considering more formal exit interviews when students leave our districts. And we're investing in more guidance resources, especially during times of transition, and you'll hear about that in Dan's budget presentation. For visibility of that language, we are planning to communicate more examples of how the outcomes for the Bronxville Promise are modeled in our curriculum and talk to our students beginning tonight with the presentation to come. We will also be working on bringing more visibility to the promise outcomes language through a website design. That's gonna be a long process. It's probably gonna take all of next year. So we're hoping that that's, that will be complete by the 24, 25 school year. And then in practice, we're investing in, the leadership team is investing in relevant professional development such as facilitating civil discourse. We're working to integrate civil discourse throughout the high school curriculum. And tonight, we'll be doing a first reading on, to update our policy on the teaching of controversial issues. And finally, the board is considering more workshops in the future to allow for continued community conversation. You know, one of the, we continue to get feedback from the community. We continue to receive policies from other districts and it's prompted us to review our own policy manual or to revisit it. Often, what we see when we read policies that have been put into place in other districts is language that speaks to aspirations and striving to be, striving for values and goals. And so often, we see these policies, sometimes they become part of a code of conduct, like a student code of conduct, but more often, you see them in the philosophy section of a policy manual. And so, we took a deeper dive into our own policy manual and we found some interesting language, including in our old manual in nineteen, from 1971, language that refers to students only as his and he's. So that's not very inclusive. So we, we came to the realization that there's some probably review and updating that the board could do of the policy manual. As far as next steps, the board has asked Dr. Kelly and the leadership team to review and consider updates for the promise language. And they will also incorporate some feedback from multiple constituencies. And then, again, we will have a first reading tonight of an update to the controversial issues policy. We will have continued emphasis on visibility at future board meetings with kind of a promise inaction moment. And we will continue to make the website design a priority next year. So that is my update on that topic. Just a little reminder that next Thursday morning, the board will have a meet and greet at the elementary school canopy, beginning at 8:00 a.m. There is no agenda. We simply want to be available. If anyone hasn't had the opportunity to, to meet, to meet us or has anything they wish to share or ask about. So that will be next Thursday morning, May 11th. And before our June board meeting at 6:00, there'll be a community reception for our new superintendent, Dr. Rachel Kelly. So that is all that I have. And I think my next order of business is to improve the minutes from the last meeting. So could we have, are there any comments or corrections to the April minutes? There being none, could we have a motion?
No move.
Second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, minutes approved.
Do you have the PowerPoint slides?
Great. Prior to the hearing, which is required by statute, I have a few slides to review regarding the 2023-24 budget, adopted budget, which will go before the voters on May 16th. Next slide. As you can see by our budget calendar, we're, we're down to the end. The board adopted the budget in March after three months of deliberations and then we put in another three months before that of development by the administration. Next slide, please, Connie. This budget is based on projections which reflect slightly declining enrollment at the elementary school level, but we don't really know yet with the size of the kindergarten class. That's always the big surprise. We have a large class from middle school moving into the high school and a smaller class coming into sixth grade. High school enrollment tends to be a little more stable at this point than the other two. And we're projecting, I think, 1,533 students next year. But interestingly enough, we, we tend to under-project. And I think an analysis the board asked me to do, had me look back both in a 10-year and a five-year window, and it seemed we under-project our enrollment, which is, to me, was interesting. And I think, I think that serves us better than over-projecting it and devoting more resources than we need to thank, than we need. But, so I would expect that number might come in a little higher, if history is any guide. Next slide, please, Connie. So after months of deliberation and consideration, the board adopted a $52,797,532 budget, which is 3.49% higher than the current budget. However, due to some revenue shifts, this budget results in a tax levy increase of 2.29% and is $15,000 below our projected calculated cap of 2.33%. For comparison purposes, we can see that the 2023-2024 tax levy change is in line with most other changes over the last five years while coping with one of the larger budget increases, which to reiterate, is mostly driven by inflation and addressing identified avenues for improvement. Next slide, please, Connie. The pie chart is a visual representation of how the budget is, is cut up. As you can see, the blue shaded areas, nearly 75% of our budget consists of salaries and benefits for our staff to run the school. Beyond that, our next largest areas are expenditures for services we contract for: security, cleaning, insurance, transportation. Then we have debt service, BOSI's costs for a myriad of services, such as running our technology network, purchasing hardware and software, professional development, and other educational services. The rest is about 5% and consists of supplies, equipment, textbooks, legal fees, and special education tuition costs for students whose needs we can't meet in our own school. Next slide, please, Connie. This slide shows where the largest impact on the tax levy comes from. Expenditures, which is the top grouping in descending order of impact, show that salaries are the largest component of the change. Nearly all of the salary change is due to contractual changes for current programs. Although we are adding three programmatic positions, a counselor, a psychologist, and a math coach, we were able to realize an efficiency of an administrative position through the transition to a new superintendent. So we're going with one less administrator next year than we had this year. Next slide, please, Connie. In calculating the impact to the taxpayer, we look at our revised proposed tax levy and divide that by the preliminary assessment role, which is now final, which is up 0.57% to over $3.25 billion. That calculation gets us a tax rate of about $14.33 per thousand of assessed value. The tax rate change from '22-'23 is 1.71%. Based on the preliminary, this, this rate, a homeowner whose property is assessed at $2 million in 2022 is paying about $28,182 in school taxes, while a homeowner whose property assessed at $2 million in 2023 would pay $28,663 in school taxes. I would advise all residents to see if their assessment changed because that would be a factor in this calculation as well. Next slide, please. Okay, for historical perspective on the tax rate, this projected rate is toward the higher end that we've seen over the last 10 years, which has consistently been in the $13.3 to $14.3 per thousand of assessed value. And that has to do, obviously, with our, our, both the change in the tax levy and the, if the tax levy changes, percent change is more than the assessment role percent change, that brings up the tax rate. Next slide, please, Connie. As you can see by the far right column, we expect to end the year in decent shape, similar to prior years, with our fund balance. If our surplus, if our projected surplus grows throughout the rest of the year, it would increase this number. Conversely, if the surplus is less than anticipated, it would reduce this figure. I usually project conservatively, so I think this is probably the low end where we'll wind up. And as we're looking at the likelihood of addressing capital needs in coming years, I would anticipate the finance committee might recommend that any surplus fund balance be allocated to capital projects reserve or the teachers' retirement system reserve. And that's it for the public presentation. The referendum and the board election is on Tuesday, May 16th, from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. in the Blue Gym by the Meadow Avenue entrance to the building. We encourage all residents of the village to come out and vote. There are also additional referendum questions regarding the expansion of our capital projects reserve and the procedure for electing board members as well.
And so just to clarify, on that last slide, you had restrictions, a million annually to the capital reserve, but the, the proposition would increase that to 2 million annually?
Well, it would, it would, I think, it would eliminate the cap, the annual cap, and double the lifetime of reserve total to 20 million.
Yeah.
I think we originally thought about 2 million, but if we ever wanted to do a wholesale sale, restructure of our reserves, 2 million might not be enough. So we just removed that.
Yeah. And so that, that has the effect of potentially reducing our borrowing needs.
That, that, that's the plan. It was very effective, we used it very effectively in the last capital project, where we had to borrow less because we built up a reserve. We also use that reserve for turf fields.
Yeah.
Because, you know, every, every 10 or 12 years, you can count on having to redo at least one, if not both, turf fields.
And again, just to clarify, eliminating, raising the cumulative from 10 to 20 is because it, when we put money in and take money out, it doesn't go back to zero.
No, it's the, it's the total life, the total that was, has been added cumulatively to that fund throughout the life.
Not intuitive.
Yeah.
And so, at this point, are there any questions or comments from the community on the budget? Is there anything, do we have the electronic comment thing open? Yes.
Why do children in special education need tuition?
Sorry.
Why do children in special education need tuition?
I got this. Great question. So there are some students who live in Bronxville, and we don't have an appropriate program for them here. Right now, we only have two. So it's the district's responsibility to still educate those students. So even though they may have to go to another program, the district still has to pay for them.
And so there are some students who come to us because their district can't serve them, and those students' families pay tuition to Bronxville.
Not families. Their districts.
Districts.
Sorry. Correct. The districts pay.
Did that answer your question?
I mean.
Great question.
Did you ask me any funny questions?
Wow. Someone's paying attention.
That's right. That's right. Did we have any electronic questions, Connie? No? All right. Well, if there are no questions, then we will move on in the agenda. And Mara, we're gonna throw you a curve ball. We were thinking maybe we could move directly to the student presentations before Dr. Kelly and our, and our student presenter.
Thank you. Some of these students have AP exams tomorrow, so I'm sure they'll be pleased to get out of here quickly and go continue with their preparation.
It's my pleasure tonight to talk about Service Learning Week along with the disposition of engaged citizenship, which is part of our Bronxville Promise and our North Star. We have several students joining us this evening to talk about Service Learning Week, directed by Alyssa Dioguarte, coordinator of service learning for kindergarten and 12th grade, and Derek DeRienzo, the administrative intern and recent graduate of the Future School Leaders Academy at Bank Street College. So first, what I'd like to talk a little bit about in terms of introduction is what is service learning? Service learning focuses on the learning of the volunteer. While community service or volunteering is focused often on the outcome that is measured by the amount of time or goods provided, the outcome of service learning is often measured by the reflection of the learner, including how the experience changed him or her, and the development of a deeper understanding of structural causes of complex social issues.
Connie, can you go to the next slide, please? Thank you.
In terms of the Bronxville Promise, service learning addresses several indicators and outcomes of engaged citizenship. As you will notice this evening, for our elementary and middle school students, opportunities for service learning may be teacher-directed. And through those early experiences, we empower our high school students to seek out problems that need to be solved, become informed about the larger issues at play, and take inspired action. Additionally, service learning helps students to learn about the experiences of others without judgment and identify how these experiences have helped our students to grow, develop empathy, and demonstrate respect. Of note is the distinction the promise makes between charity and problem-solving. Far more complex than simply collecting cans or coats, service learning aims to develop engaged citizens that find problems and solutions, with a broader focus than only those of the individuals aided through one's efforts. But a recognition of how the work influences self. We cannot be more proud of the efforts of our students and faculty as part of this week of service. So without further ado, I would like to call Simos Dimas Jr. and his teacher, Alyssa Dioguarte, to the podium to talk about GrantedUSA.org.
Hi.
Hello.
I'm Alyssa Dioguarte. Thanks for having me tonight. I'm not gonna talk for very long and I'm gonna turn everything directly over to the students. So first, we'll hear from Simos, who will take me through his project that's associated with my service learning seminar. Two of the three high school students today are enrolled in the service learning seminar, and our third is heavily involved in service work through various club activities and opportunities throughout the high school.
Thank you. Thank you for the ability to address you all tonight. I'm incredibly excited to be here. As Ms. Dio mentioned, I'm Simos. I'm a junior, been at Bronxville since kindergarten. And this speech and service learning class really reflects a debt of gratitude that I owe not only to Bronxville, but also to Ms. Dio, so thank you. Where do we find ourselves and what do we need? It's a question I continually ask myself, and I think to the, the answer to that is that we're at the intersection of increasing independence in a rapidly changing world. And as young adults, you know, entering a new stage of our lives, what we need in order to succeed are two things. The first, you can see, is lift, and the second is a safety net. And so, we need to be brought up to succeed, to go farther. We also need something down below to catch us when we invariably fall. And that's what service learning represents to me, and that's what Ms. Dio's providing me, something to bring me up, but also something to catch me when I fall down. And really, what that's translated into is a virtuous cycle, where one good thing leads to another, and everything is a force multiplier for each other. And you can see, Ms. Dio's seminar is number one because it's created this cycle. The flexibility, support, and responsibility that it's given me has caused some really incredible things. And I'd like to call your attention to that responsibility and call to action. It reminds me of a great, a great quote from St. John, "Faith without works is dead." It's great to have a belief, great to think about something, but if you're not putting that into action, what does it really mean? And so that call to action is really what's inspired my nonprofit, GrantedUSA.org. That's a community-based run. We sponsor college campus visitation for first-generation low-income students, and that's also led to my internship at Bloomberg Philanthropies, which I created a lengthy research paper on this subject for. The year, you can see part of what's done with Granted. In just this year alone, we will have visited eight colleges and over 250 student campus visits. All of that would not have been possible but for us. And we've visited a bunch of schools. You can see some images there. Penn, we went to in February with 40 of these first-generation low-income students, and then Ithaca College this spring. And this process has been incredibly rewarding, but it's really the action that when I went, when I went on these trips, that really made everything worth it. It was incredibly meaningful to me. And this experience, I think, has really made myself unrecognizable to where, who I was a couple of years ago. And what it's taught me is that it's great to do well, it's great to succeed, but that success needs to be grounded in doing well, and sorry, in doing good and serving, helping others. And so with that, I'd like to finish with a quick video. This is from a trip we went to in April with a student from Mount Vernon High School, and he's just gonna talk about his story and how Granted, what we did with him. Hey, everyone. Here on Cornell, with Ray. And I just want to let Ray kind of talk for a minute about this trip.
Hi guys, I'm Ray. I am part of Mount Vernon High School. Got into a few colleges, doing the beginning of the summer, which we went to yesterday, and then Cornell, where I have today. But I've kind of been able to visit them, you know, so I'm very appreciative to grant to what they, they took me on a trip, and I think I'll be able to decide and come in after today.
Seeing campuses is very important because the, the culture and the vibe, it's very different in person, even though I've explored both of them online alone.
Really amazing. Thank you, Ray. Yeah, and so that's just a little bit about what we do. I have nothing but thanks to Ms. Dio, her class. And if you want to learn more about what we do, there's a link to our website, a couple more videos on there which tell the story pretty well. So thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name's Tony Taguero. I'm like Simos or Junior, and I'm also gonna be here talking about my service learning project aimed at getting out the vote in Bronxville, but I'd also first like to thank Simos again for that wonderful speech. So, sorry, next slide.
Hey, everyone. Here on Cornell. Sorry. So, a right that people have fought and died for.
To say voting is important is kind of an understatement, but unfortunately, it's something that many people have taken.
Seeing campuses is very important because the culture and the vibe, it's very different in person, even though I've explored both of them online alone.
Really amazing. Thank you, Ray. Yeah, and so that's just a little bit about what we do. I have nothing but thanks to Ms. Diaw, her class. And if you want to learn more about what we do, there's a link to our website, a couple more videos on there which tell the story pretty well. So thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name's Tony Taguero. I'm like Simos a junior, and I'm also going to be here talking about my service learning project aimed at getting out the vote in Bronco, but I'd also first like to thank Simos again for that wonderful speech. So, sorry, next slide. So.
Everyone.
Sorry.
Everyone.
So a right that people have fought and died for. To say voting is important is kind of an understatement, but unfortunately, it's something that many people have taken for granted. In the U.S. especially, if you could switch to the next slide as well, youth voter turnout has historically been lower than any other age groups, and unfortunately, our town of Bronco is not exempt from this issue whatsoever. This turnout is especially low in midterm and off-year village elections, and as you can see from this graph, and I saw Ms. Diaw's service and advocacy class as the perfect opportunity for me to change that. So my initial goal with this project was before the midterm elections, and it was to get young Bronco students out to vote and out to the polls. My work began almost immediately, and, next slide, please. I handwrote over 150 cards with the following message on it, not directed, not directed to Ms. Diaw, but I wrote over, handwrote over 150 messages and delivered them personally to people ages 18 to 25 around Bronco to encourage getting out to the polls in the midterm elections. And I canvassed throughout the town in Westchester community the week prior to the election to spread the voting enthusiasm and ensure people knew when and where they could vote. And then, sorry, skip two slides. One more.
One more?
Yes. Sorry. Oh, sorry. Okay, sorry. So just recently, I hosted a voter registration table during the service week for students 16-plus to register and preregister to vote in the span of two days. And I registered over 50 students, high school students, who are 16-plus in Bronco over the span of two days to vote, and I'm really proud of these numbers and hope that more events as such can eventually be held to encourage everyone in Bronco to be registered and preregistered to vote, because our voice is our vote, and I'm really trying to spread this message in Bronco. Additionally, I brought in a former county legislator to talk with some of our current seniors about the importance of a vote, and together we did a mini-activity where we allocated $100,000 to all of these seniors and asked them what they wanted, what they would do with these $100,000. With that, we wanted to teach them that how their vote and how their voice matters, and to be able to have what they want represented, they need to participate democratically. And so I think, oh, next slide, sorry. I think, that's, sorry, that's a picture of me with my registration table and also a picture with county legislator Ruth Walter, who's also running in this county election, speaking with a senior economics class. So I think that with this work, not only have I learned more about voting, like for example, that 16-year-olds can preregister, which is really cool, but also how to be a better community member, how to be a better engaged citizen, and how to be a better Bronco student. And I'm proud of it, and it's something that I really want to perpetuate here. And then next steps, more. I want, yeah, sorry. Just more registration, more mobilization events, more enthusiasm, and more education about voting. In order to get out the vote among Bronco students, we need to ensure that they all know how and when they can vote, the process, and how they can, how important it is at getting what they want heard. And lastly, I'd first like, first like to thank Ms. Diaw for pushing me to do this work. She has inspired me and pushed me throughout this whole entire process, and I could not have done anything, any of it without her. So I'd like to thank Ms. Diaw, and also thank you to the committee for allowing me to speak today. It's been an honor, and yeah, that's my service learning project. So thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Remy Melikoff. I'm a senior here. I'm part of the 13-year club, been here since kindergarten. So I'm actually here to talk about not a service learning project, but something that I did through a club. And so this kind of all started back in freshman year. I remember going to the club fair, and there was no environmental club, which was very shocking to me. And I kind of was walking around, and I ran into a group of girls who I'd befriended in my sophomore earth science class. And we were like, hey, we need to start an environmental club. Like, this is not even a question. And so at our first meeting, it was super exciting. There was like 30-plus kids, and they were all really excited, and we were like, we need to channel this momentum and find a project that's really going to pull us all together. And so we chose composting. And the reason why, I have a personal connection. My grandma, my grandmother is German, and there's like a very like system of sustainability embedded in the German culture, and so she has like this amazing garden. She taught me how to garden. That's a picture of my zucchinis that I grew. Very proud of that still. But basically, she had a compost huge little area in her garden, and that was what gave me the initial inspiration. And so I remember the first thing we did is we talked to Ms. Meyer, and she was like, you know, we tried this many years ago, and there were rodents, so you got to be more creative. And so we did some research, and we settled on doing an off-site hauling system. And so those are some pictures of some local leaders, Bron Michelle from Scarsdale, who had great success with this off-site hauling system. And so we talked to them, and they helped me, like, they'd give me ideas for how to put together a grant. And so I applied for a grant with the sophomores, and we got awarded $10,000 for this two-fold. It was for education and also the materials. And so, let me go to the next slide. But we, these are some of the things we purchased with the grant money. And so we have these new signage and the new bins as well, and these are located in the cafeteria and some of the classrooms. But mostly what is so significant or kind of meaningful about this project is how it's brought us together as a K through 12 community, meeting with Ms. Adams, and Mr. Biflika, and Mr. Nakora, and like the head of the cafeteria as well. It just like kind of pulled together a lot of people we wouldn't normally bring together. And then we also got the middle school involved, the SOPS, new environmental club as well. And we've all kind of pulled together on this initiative, and it's been super meaningful. Good, next slide. So these are some pictures of actual bins. As you can see, it's not perfect yet, but this is why for service week, we were sending in some high schoolers to kind of monitor, make sure that the kids knew what they were doing. But we do have some more money left in the grant, and we definitely want to use that to get more bins and signage. And then we also want to, as you can see, it's kind of overflowing with non-compostable waste, so we want to fix that by getting compostable materials. And then also those condiment dispensers, just making the whole like food waste eliminated. And yeah, it's been so meaningful to me, kind of as I'm graduating, to see this program finally roll out, because it was stalled during COVID. And I'm just so excited to see, like, come back and see what the green community's been up to. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is actually the elementary school environmental club that Stephanie Kennedy runs on Fridays through VASC, and they are our green team now, and working on getting some more feet on the ground in the lunchrooms in the coming weeks to continue the work that they're doing. So really wonderful K-12 initiative. No part of it could have happened without the other. Our middle school students are going to speak now. We have two seventh graders from our seventh-grade science class, Colin and Alexandra, who are going to come talk to us a little bit about their work with the Bronx River and their work with our high school Bronx River class.
Good evening. My name is Colin Grass, and I'm in the SOPS seventh-grade science class.
Hi, my name is Ellen Tanner Judah, and I'm in Mr. Tardy's seventh-grade science class. We're here tonight to talk to you about our research trip this year to the Bronx River.
Recently, some high school students who also study the Bronx River came and presented to our class about some problems with the river. We learned that there is a storm drain that got contaminated with sewage and is flowing into the Bronx River. It was supposed to be sealed, but the seal has broken. This wastewater makes the living conditions for the organisms and creatures that live in the river more challenging.
In my class, we were shown examples of river erosion and learned how to identify erosion by looking at photos and seeing if they had signs that exposed trees or terrestrial plants. We thought that many human influences like concrete and trash, we were taught, sorry, we were taught that many human influences like concrete and trash deeply affect rivers and their ecosystem around it. It gave me and my classmates insight on human influences on rivers and how to, and also how to save ecosystems around us were affected by river erosion.
Hearing directly from highs, from the high school students about something that we are also studying in middle school highlights something really special about our school, that we are a K through 12 school in all-in-one building. The high schoolers guided us around their research spots along the Bronx River. We learned about the tools they used to study the water and some of the specific topics they were researching. It allowed us to be collaborative with them and ask them questions about their experiences.
Furthermore, having our K through 12 buildings allowed us, allows us to build upon and teach this information to younger students. When we learn from the high schoolers, we as the younger students can take this information to build upon it, learning our own methods from the high schoolers. We can then teach this to younger students and create a chain of great information that allows the students to improve their older, older peers, as well as make their own connections and experiences along the way.
At the river, the high schooler guiding us told us about his experiences, including a time when he and some of his classmates caught a fish and brought it back to the school for further study. He showed us more about how they use leak bags, bags full of leaves and rocks that we sink at the bottom of the river to catch microinvertebrates. It was exciting to know that the high schoolers do similar research to what we do, or to what we are doing in middle school.
When my class was at the river, we learned about an invasive plant called Japanese mountain meat. We learned about the dangers of invasive plants and how they take vital nutrients that other plants use to thrive. We also learned that to identify, we're looking at the leaves ahead of the plant. Its extremely fast growth rate and very complex roots makes it harder to remove from the ecosystem. This year, groups of students learned how to remove mountain meat in order to help the ecosystem. Other groups use tools to pick up trash from the river.
The Bronx River is a special ecosystem right in our own backyard. Because our school is so close, it gives us a special opportunity to do meaningful research. I really enjoy this work, and I'm glad it will continue as I move to high school.
Adding on to Colin, having something like a whole river with an ecosystem constantly changing right next to us could be very beneficial to the younger minds of our elementary students. It exposes our younger students to a new environment that could be studied for years with so many different topics to learn about. The Bronx River is truly a special place that expands upon our school's topics coming from. Our work helps improve our community's access and enjoyment of the river.
Thank you for having us tonight and letting us share our experiences.
We're going to hear from two different elementary school projects as well, so I'm going to let Derek DiRienzo introduce the project that his class has worked on, as well as the other fourth grade class as well.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for having us. So my class, I'm going to invite my, my three girls up. So my class partnered with Feeding Westchester and worked at Creighton Center. My class partnered with Feeding Westchester. I'm going to let them do most of the talking, but just to what Mara said earlier, at the lower level, our service learning projects are much more teacher-directed, but I will say that although myself and Mrs. Wright, we will hear from her students in a minute, we make the partnership, but the kids really do all of the work, and they really gain the reflection, so I think it's really important to hear what they have to say. So I'm going to sit here.
I'm Grayson Bay.
I'm Kate Martin.
And Ali DePaul.
And welcome, Mr. DiRienzo's class.
First service learning week, our class partnered with Feeding Westchester to make food bags for people who are struggling with food access and hunger. We learned many things from Ms. Kira, a person who works at Feeding Westchester about the struggle with hunger happening all around us in Westchester. Through their many partnerships, Feeding Westchester provides meals to 200,000 people per month. 66% of those people depend on Feeding Westchester as their primary food source. Feeding Westchester provided 16 million meals total in 2022. We also learned that food is a number one item in landfill. The U.S. wastes 80 billion pounds of food each year, 400 million in Westchester alone. Feeding Westchester helps offset that number by taking food donations from individuals, groups, and organizations, and retail giants like Walmart, Walmart and Costco.
We began by collecting donations from our families. We collected items like box cereal, breakfast bars, milk cartons, food packs, juice boxes, food snacks, and microwaveable pasta. We assembled items, packaged them into large ziplock bags. We made 50 breakfast bags, 100 lunch bags, and 100 dinner bags. Ms. Matt and Josh invited us to a conference where there was a large space, and we were able to sell free assembly bags. Mr. DiRienzo thought it was going to take us a long time, but we did all to produce 50 bags in 45 minutes. We were very lucky because our families were so generous, and we made exactly what we needed to make our food bags. We packed up all the bags into Mr. DiRienzo's car and brought them to the food bank ourselves to make the donation.
Well, when we were at the food bank to make our donations, they were very kind to give us a tour of the warehouse. It's a 25,000-square-foot distribution center with 10 delivery trucks, including one that acts as a mobile food pantry. 40% of their inventory is fresh produce that needs to be cycled out every few weeks. Remaining inventory is packed and shelved until it's eaten. Method stays in the warehouse for one to two months, so they need many volunteers to help pack and distribute the food. After our visit to the warehouse, we were closely reflecting about how the project made us feel. A lot of us shared that we felt really good about the way that we were able to help others. Many of us didn't know there's so many people right here in Westchester struggling with food access and hunger. We realized that it's important to donate things when you have the opportunity, and that we need to work hard on it to raise.
Thank you for having us.
And now, so Mrs. Wright's class and the other three, fourth grade classes also took part in a different service learning project. So we have two students from Mrs. Wright's class. They're going to come up and talk about the project that they did.
I'm Jeff Corney. I'm Leah Seaton, and we're talking about Fundals of Joy. Our class, Ms. Wright's class, Ms. Lebrini, Ms. Wright and Ms. Keane's classes worked together, create acts of volunteer search, providing shelters in Westchester County. He coordinated this project with Fundals of Joy, which is a Bronco charity organization that gives essentials to families in need. The T C's create an Amazon Wish List, help shed with pens. Parents generously bought and donated the essential items and shipped them to the classroom. During service week, we worked together with donation to aid with helping classmates.
Overall, the class felt happy to give tickets and read. The atmosphere in the classroom is full of energy and enthusiasm. We take these things for granted, and not being able to afford or access the essential is a real problem for many people, particularly those living in shelters. It helps some of us realize that there are people who are unfortunate as well. I think this would be a great thing to do in the following years for the fourth grade classes and maybe other grades too. We learned that such small things, like the things we gave to these people, can make a big, a big difference. And so.
Gosh, that was so much. The projects vary greatly, K through 12, as you can see, and I think for the most part, and also anybody that's still here, thank you so much for coming out to speak to the board on an evening in the middle of the school week. We really appreciate it. You did such a good job, so thank you so much. And to speak to Derek's point, I mean, this is really student-driven. Students really embrace the projects that they've chosen or the ones that they're involved in in their classrooms and, and make it their own. It's really wonderful work to see come to fruition, so thank you.
Thank you.
Great job, everyone. Thank you.
Not an easy act to follow, but I will do my best. They present publicly so much better than I do, but we'll give it a shot. So good evening, everybody. It's good to see all of you. Given that I prepared a video version of the Bronco Beat that will be going out to all of you tomorrow, I just wanted to update everyone on the status of our first-floor A Wing. As you know, due to the rain event this past Sunday evening, one of our sanitary lines backed up. Mike Lee, our Director of Facilities, was on-site with a crew that worked tirelessly throughout the night to clean and sanitize the affected areas. On Monday, an industrial hygienist was here to conduct both surface and air testing. All levels were acceptable except for one area in a bathroom. We have cleaned and sanitized that area again, and will conduct further testing tomorrow. As is our practice, we will not reoccupy this entire area until acceptable testing levels have been achieved, and we do hope that we will get those test results by Monday and be able to reoccupy by Tuesday. As you are also aware, in past years, significant rain events have caused remarkable problems, including flooding of our building and school grounds. I am pleased to report that we did not experience a flooding issue as a result of Sunday's rain event. All five pumps worked as designed and kept storm water outside of our school and off the fields for the duration of the rainstorm. This is yet another example of how our students and faculty are adaptable and flexible. They made the necessary room locations without blinking an eye. I'm so proud to work in this school community that comes together so readily and without hesitation. So a huge shout-out to Mike Lee, Dan Carlin, all of our facilities crew, and certainly all of our faculty, staff, and students who stepped up. Shay, it's all yours.
Thank you. So I was going to talk a lot about Service Week, but I haven't talked about that a lot. So I'll just briefly note what we did. For Service Week, there are plenty of clubs that also participate. I think it's like 95% of clubs participate and plan some event that has to do with providing service to our community. And I know we had a really successful year this year. We had a speaker from SFL come in and talk about Feeding Westchester. We had a bunch of fundraisers and a bunch of collectibles, like cans and things like that, to serve our community, which was really nice to see students be very passionate about certain subjects. We also have had a high school band's concert recently, which went very well. I don't know much about music, but it sounded pretty. We also have a middle school musical coming up this weekend. There's one tomorrow night, one Saturday night, and there might be one Sunday, yeah? No? I don't know. But I know there's Friday and Saturday, so that's also exciting. I like to see the plays. I think they're fun to watch. Our past couple of weeks have been very busy, but also very busy generally. We've been prepping for APs and all of our AP classes. This week and next week are AP weeks, so all of our exams are going on right now. I have an AP tomorrow. And then we've also been really busy with prom. I work with the junior government, student government, and we've been planning prom a lot, working out different, like the photo booth, and then also tickets and buses and proposals have started. I don't know if you guys have seen the Instagram, but yeah. And then so coming up, we also have seniors are leaving like actual school and they get to do senior shadowing and a bunch of other fun activities, which will be cool for them. And we're near the end of the school year, so thankfully, yeah. But that's about it.
Thank you, Shay. And how about you? We excuse you so you can get a good night's sleep. I'm short.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thanks for your input. Okay, we're ready for the personnel agenda?
We're ready.
We're ready. I have a few words I would like to say because the board is being asked this evening to accept Bruce Myers resignation for the purpose of retirement, and I just wanted to say a few words about him. So I'd like to take a moment and speak in honor of Bruce Myers, who has submitted his resignation for the purpose of retirement. Bruce has served the students of our Bronxville Elementary School for the past 32 years. His colleague shared wonderful anecdotes with me, so please indulge me as I share a few of them with all of you. From a colleague that worked closely with Bruce for 10 years, she commented, "Over the years, with the addition of the Common Core and new learning standards, teachers would sometimes feel that there wasn't enough time to accomplish everything that they needed or wanted to do. Teachers were often worried about fitting in the curriculum and teaching students all the required material. On days when this particular colleague was feeling particularly worried about getting all of the content in, she would find Bruce, not in his room, but outside on the front yard. Remember, he would always say, they are kids. They need to smile. They need to run around outside. They need to create and be creative. Always make time for those moments, even when it feels like there is no time. Bruce never let us forget that our classroom was filled with children who needed time just to be children." Other colleagues shared that teaching fifth grade, Bruce always had a way of bringing the team back to what was most important, the children. Bruce was zen before zen was popular. Walking into his classroom, there was always a calming aura. You would find him playing the guitar with students surrounding him, or you'd find him tinkering with tools and building something alongside his students. In meetings, Bruce was always a man of few words, but when he had something to say, people listened. His colleagues enjoyed teasing Bruce to get to the point. Always a philosopher, Bruce would often answer a question with a question. He pushed everyone he met to think more deeply and thoughtfully. So time management was never Bruce's forte. One of his colleagues would inevitably barrel into his room to remind him it was time to switch classes. Meanwhile, Bruce was always doing what he loved, conversing with his students and brainstorming with them on how to solve some problem. Bruce was a gift to all of his students and colleagues alike. Bronxville has been blessed to have him here for 32 years. Indeed. Indeed. Thank you. Of course. I was very fortunate. Our Rachel had him, oops, she's now a senior, and it was a special. So in addition to that resolution that I put before you this evening, there are a few others. We have some parent leaves that are scheduled for September. We have a few overages due to an injury of a teacher. We have a teacher aide resignation. And then, as discussed in executive session, we are terminating the probationary employment of an employee. I'm asking you to consider the terms and conditions for our athletic trainer, as well as one revision to our special other stipends. We did have an unanticipated trip to Boston for our eighth graders, and we did ask Jim and Egno to coordinate all of that in a very short amount of time. So I ask you to consider items A through K this evening.
Any questions? We have a motion to approve items A through K.
Motion.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Congratulations, Bruce, and we'll find more time to celebrate you.
No financial report this month since it's early and we don't have any bank statement yet, but suffice it to say, it'll probably be pretty much the same as all the others the last four or five months. We're doing well on revenues and expenditures are tight. We do have one financial action item, designated fund grants from the foundation, which total nearly $88,000. There's a whole host of them, and you know, I think, I remember vetting these with the administration. We discussed all of these. We're happy to have them and with tremendous gratitude to the foundation as always.
Do any of our members have any questions? Do you have any color of my bulletin?
No.
Yeah. So these are from designated funds, so funds that are kind of restricted to these kinds of applications, and there will be another round of foundation grants next week, right? Yeah. These are terrific. We're so grateful. If there's no questions, could we have a motion to accept them?
So I'm a second.
On favor?
Aye. With gratitude.
Yes, thank you.
I had a facilities update, which is pretty much crossed out because the superintendent reviewed everything I was going to review. I do have one other piece of information regarding the backup, that there was really zero property loss at all. The exception was a rug in the fireplace room we had to take. That's it. So I mean, this isn't even an insurance claim. So I mean, that's really good news.
Any thoughts on what it would have been like without the five pumps? Do you think we would have had a massive flood?
Oh, yeah.
Bad.
All five were kicked in. All five were going. And they took care of all the water. Outside water never got closed.
Incredible.
Yep. Absolutely.
And have we had, we've had this kind of backup before?
Yeah, we actually have a manual diaphragm valve. You know, it's kind of like a seal on a submarine, you know, you turn this thing, that we did not get to in time, and that it's a manual shut-off of that sewage line. So we're actually asking our architects to take a look at the possibility of an auto-check or backflow valve to prevent this in the future, because you know, these things can happen so fast that we can't get to it in time. And you know, I just want to reiterate, as Rachel did, our staff is really good at this You know, we have the hygienist, I called him within minutes of hearing about the backflow. He came early the next morning, and you know, I think it's important that we have the hygienist do the testing. And you know, it's our, you know, it's our practice and it's our belief that we don't reoccupy any area until we get acceptable test levels. And you know, that first floor is ready to reoccupy. It was probably ready to reoccupy the whole floor probably Tuesday afternoon, but that one bathroom came back with a high bacteria level, so we're just shutting off that whole wing until that test's acceptable. And all the air tests were negative from day one, negative being a positive result. And then we're going to look to schedule a facilities committee meeting before the end of the year to begin to prioritize the list of needs for the next project. This work is expected to be continued by the next facilities committee and actually probably take at least a year or two, but we definitely want to take advantage of the experience that Mike and Jen still offer us one more time before they leave the board.
You're going to stay on, right?
Get in my number. Will we have that proposal for the cover for the pumps before the end of the year?
I don't know, but I'll check. I'm hoping it shouldn't take them that long.
Okay. And what about, where do we stand with the outdoor classrooms?
Awaiting SED approval, which last time we checked, remember, we looked into seeing if we could get a third-party approval, but it seems that that's taking just as long as SED approval. So I, at this point, probably at least a month or two away. You know, it's not inside work, so we actually could do that work in the school year. We'd rather not, but you know, one area, and I think the Midland Avenue area would be much easier than the one directly adjacent to the playground, but we'll see, you know, if we can do it over the summer, that would be preferable.
What was the timeline on the energy efficiency audit that they were going to prepare for?
We're going to, I think the approval of that contract is tonight, and we'll get them started as soon as possible. Because there are two action items. One is the board wants to do kind of an energy efficiency audit, and the cost of that audit, which would be in-depth, is about $35,000, but NYSERDA, which is the state agency, will cover 75% of the fee. So we're happy to do that. And the other is, you know, I kind of feel like a rock band that's going on the final tour every time with these change orders. This is supposedly the final change order for the contract, for the construction, final last contract change order for the last contract on the construction project for foremost electrical contract, for outdoor duct detector enclosures with 120-volt circuits for heaters and blowers. And what it is, is the manufacturer's requirements for these units, for them to be enclosed, that was not what the architect specified, but in order to keep the warranties valid, we had to create enclosures for these units, and that's what this change order is for. And with this change order, the project is about $500,000 below budget overall. So you know, we couldn't have gotten better rates on the bonds, you know? I think the facilities committee over the last five years did tremendous work on this project. And you know, we dealt with really inflated bids during that time, you know? The cost of construction just increased astronomically, but we hit financing perfectly. And you know, that was the work that the facilities committee and the finance committee did in advance that really drove the success of this project.
But Dan, where is this going to leave us with our state aid?
I will be able to file final cost reports after this change order is filed with the state, and then they submit their last payment requisition. Once that check is cut, I can file final cost reports.
So next month or two?
Probably, yeah, by the end, by the end of June, certainly. But this change order took about a year to negotiate, so we'll see how quickly they pull the trigger on the payment requisition. So those are the two facilities action items.
And so the net cost to the district for the energy audit is about $9,000?
About $9,000.
And what will be the deliverable?
I think the deliverable will help our plan because there's all kinds of window replacement and you know, the ventilator units and things like that in the construction plan. So it'll better inform both the need for that and any efficiencies we might realize by doing those.
Any further questions? We have a motion to approve the energy audit proposal and the final change order. I will move for that. On favor? And thanks, Dan, to you for your stewardship of that project as well.
And that's it for facilities.
Okay, and then there's one more action item.
We do have an action item, and Toby's hanging around for it. We have an overnight trip approval for the French exchange. Normally, something like this would go on the reorganization agenda in July, but approval is needed now as the program is very early in the year, and in order to begin to book travel and lock in hosts, we need it approved by the board now.
This is the French exchange coming back online.
Yay!
In person, online.
Yeah. What was the need to switch schools?
So the, unfortunately, the school that we've had a relationship with the past 20 years was not able to do the French exchange. was not able to do the French exchange next year, mostly because of the increase in costs for energy and everything else in Europe right now. And the school subsidizes a good portion of the exchange. So, they pay, the families pay very little for the exchange, and they were not able to keep that cost low enough for their students with the rising costs, so they just said they couldn't do it next year. And we just happened to be in luck because one of our families, AJ's aunt, is, happens to work at a French school, and she visited me over Christmas to talk to me about how you start an exchange with an American school. And so, kind of kept her number in my back pocket, and sure enough, unfortunately, the school in Combe backed out, and so then I contacted her, and we were able to, just in a couple months, organize the exchange with different areas. This is south of France. And so, and also very exciting is they have something similar to us with the Bronx River Project. So, they're on a river, they do research, and they're excited to share that information with our students whether or not they're a part of the exchange. So, that's also an exciting.
That's great. Very serendipitous. Any questions? Can we have a motion to approve the, approving the French exchange, right?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Motion carries.
Darian.
I see there's a cookie cooking class on here.
Oh, yes.
So, we'll be bringing some back, of course, right?
So, that's what we do for the French students. So, we teach them how to cook, taught them cooking, they can just have a pet.
That's her gourmet cooking.
You guys all deserve it.
Policy updates. Yeah. Do you want to speak to this, or me? We have two, well, I guess it's a board thing. So, we have two policy updates, and the process is that we're presenting them both tonight for a first reading by the board. The first, I believe, is a required update on the use of timeout rooms, physical restraints, and aversives. My understanding is that none of these are things that we make use of here in Bronxville, but we're still required to have the policy.
That's correct.
Okay. And Connie, what's the best way for us to consider these?
Well, I can flash them up on the screen if you'd like, or if you've read them.
Well, we've all had them in advance and read them.
We've read them, yeah.
You can take them together.
I guess we should, we can put them up on the screen, put the first one up on the screen. It's been posted with the agenda, so the community's had an opportunity to see it as well.
The use of timeout rooms.
Yeah. So, yeah, we've all had an opportunity to read it. I don't, I didn't have any comments on that first one. I just want to do what's required of us.
I agree.
Good. Glad we're all in agreement about that. And the second is the teaching of controversial issues, so shall we throw that one up there as well? So, two of our board members, Michael Brandison and Eddie Lennon, agreed to review and update this policy. So, the text in blue represents the proposed update. So, should we scroll to the next page as well, Connie?
Procedures.
Yeah. Yeah, if you do, if you want to.
Yeah, sure. Just so everybody knows, this is, the gestation of wanting to review this policy really came out of the advisory committee that was conducted in the fall. And that committee was really established to address some of the DEI concerns the community had. In the end, there was a segue towards the end of the committee's tenure to address controversial issues. Controversial issues policy hasn't been reviewed in 24 years. It's been around since 1979, and I will tell you that most board members, and I would expect most staff, wasn't even aware there was such a policy. But given the current climate, it really seemed apropos to look at it and see how we could better support a better learning environment, promote a better learning environment, and certainly support the teachers to be able to discuss these issues. So, in the end, the advisory committee did not come to any consensus regarding the DEI, and of course, Susan's already talked about how we're pushing that along to consider that within the Bronxville Promise. But there were a bunch of recommendations that were provided to the board to consider in updating the policy. So, we've looked at this, so that was feedback from the community. Subsequent to that, Rachel and Ann helped put together a focus group of teachers where we could discuss what this means in a classroom and how they're impacted by it. Because if there isn't a strong comfort level and confidence in how to conduct these discussions, they're not going to happen. And we want our students to have this, certainly for the benefit of critical thinking and civil discourse. So, what we really distilled it down to, and this is really just a first reading, I'm sure you can't see that in blue, I'm just going to read it real quickly. We just looked at putting really a sentence in the preamble and then adding something to the procedures. The first one really related to academic integrity and the core values that are reflected in the Bronxville Promise. So, real quickly, "The board wishes to ensure that controversial issues are presented in a manner that preserves the academic integrity of the district and the core values embraced in the Bronxville Promise." So, that would be the first edition. The other one in blue, that is at the bottom, procedures number six, is really more directed at students, that students are encouraged to develop informed conclusions about controversial topics and to debate these convictions in a civil manner respectful to any student who retains a different view, essentially to agree to disagree in a classroom in a civil manner. I don't know, Mara, do you want to say anything else about this? Mara, in our executive session, suggested that debate would be the wrong word to use here to debate these issues, that really it's about discussing them and gaining, broadening your mind even if you don't agree. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. We, you know, we, in the training we have done so far in the work with our faculty around civil discourse, we have made a distinction between discussion and debate. There is a place for debate within the curriculum, but debate usually involves a winner and a loser, and that is not necessarily the tone we want to take in developing civil discourse. It is, the goal of a civil discourse is not necessarily to change one's mind or to win, but to broaden the depth of understanding of the issue through multiple perspectives and being able to discuss issues that are controversial in nature in a civil tone and in a civil way. So, I think there is room for distinction between debate and discussion, particularly in this area.
Right. And I think the board wants to emphasize that not only do we, we're looking to update this policy, but the policy is really just the beginning, where we're really looking to send a message to the teachers that we want to better support their training and development in how to conduct this in the classroom, how to feel, I hate to use the word "safe," but I'm going to use the word "safe" because I think there is a feeling that you can't address certain subject matter because you might get bad feedback from a parent to your classroom, and it's not, it's not worth it. And we're saying, you know, when students in high school in particular, they're going to be addressing a lot of topics as they go on to college, and we should be looking at these critically and fairly in a classroom, in an environment where the teachers feel confident about discussing these topics and the students feel confident about having a discussion where there aren't winners and losers, with just a broader understanding of how to, how these concerns might be addressed. Eddie, I don't know if you want to say anything else about this.
I guess just to add to what Mike and Mara already said, the board did approve a foundation grant, very generous foundation grant, to assist with the teachers getting some continuing education and training in civil discourse and how they can properly frame the topic so that the students feel comfortable having those conversations. And it's important that, as Mike just pointed out, you know, as they progress on to college, that they're aware and they know how to have those conversations in a, in a civil manner. And it's important for the teachers to be able to do that for them and help facilitate that, so, yeah.
The only other thing I add is that the language that you guys proposed in this number six about students being respectful to other students with a different view is in response in part to what we heard during the workshops about students with less popular opinions sometimes not feeling comfortable expressing them. So, we wanted to try and codify some language about that in the policy.
Yes, thank you. That's it from us.
All right. We can take them together?
It's a first reading, so what are the...
It's a first reading. We just have a resolution that's up there, just that you approve, approve these policies after a first, or accept these policies after a first reading.
Well, do we not have a second reading?
Yes, we will.
Okay.
Didn't you? Or they were.
Okay, so resolved that the Board of Education approves the following policies after a first reading.
For a first reading.
For a first reading. Do we need, what, some motions?
Yes.
All right.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Motion carries.
So, the community and the faculty have an opportunity between this first reading and the second reading, which will probably happen at the June 16th?
15th.
15th meeting, I'd be a day late, to give us feedback. They can do that to the board directly, they can do that to an administrator.
In public comment.
Or in public comment.
Speaking of which, are there any committee reports, any updates from committees? No, we did not meet on facilities, but Dan updated us on the change order and the energy audit, so that was it for this. If there's no further updates, then we're at the point of, for a public comment, are there any community members who wish to make any comments? Anything in the queue, Brad? All right, if there's nothing, then may I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.